Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and bring the public hearing section of the Warrington Board of Alden Meeting for Tuesday, March 20, 2018, to order. Jack, if you'd like to come forth and present.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item we have is a site plan approval request for K-4 Performance Center. Site Plan SP-124. On February 1st, 2018, a request was filed for site plan approval for an indoor athletic and exercise club with outdoor athletic fields to be located at 508 Veterans Memorial Parkway. Property is Zone C3 Highway Commercial. Motion for approval passed six to zero with two absent and two abstentions due to business conflict at the March 1st, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions. I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, the public hearing notice, my planning and zoning report, and the 2016 Warrington Comprehensive Plan.
Be duly noted. This is the point where we give anybody who'd like to come up and speak on the SP-124 only to come forward to the microphone, state your name, and we'll give you five minutes to speak.
Just come forward.
If it's only on the site plan.
Oh, only on the site plan?
Yes.
Or what's the next portion of it then?
The conditional use.
Conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, not seeing anybody, we'll move on to the CUP-57.
This is a conditional use permit approval request for the K-4 Performance Center. On February 1st, 2018, a request was filed for conditional use permit approval to allow an indoor athletic and exercise club with outdoor athletic fields to be located at 508 Veterans Memorial Parkway. Property is Zone C3 Highway Commercial. Per Appendix A-2G9, a conditional use permit is required. This conditional use permit approval request has been submitted by the applicant along with the site plan SP-124. Approval request as required per Section 405.340(c)(8). Motion for approval passed six to zero with two absent and two abstentions due to business conflict at the March 1st, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions. I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, the public hearing notice, and my planning and zoning report.
Be duly noted.
Thank you, sir.
Once again, this is the portion where we'll open up to the public. We ask you to come forward to the microphone and podium, say your name, and we'll give you five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Brad. My name is Lynn Gluntz. I live directly above where Jeremiah is planning on building. I have no complaints about what he's trying to do. He's a wonderful neighbor with reps. The only concern that I have is at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, he asked for the outdoor fields from sunup to sundown. Since I'm directly above him, my living space faces that area during the summer. That can mean 6:00 a.m. to 9:30, and I would like to see those hours diminished a little bit so that I can enjoy my outside space and have the windows open without listening to children play late into the evening and early in the morning hours. That's my only concern. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and bring the public hearing section of the Warrington Board of Alden Meeting for Tuesday, March 20, 2018, to a close. We open the regular Board of Alden Meeting for Tuesday, March 20, 2018, in session. We have two special guests here, Zach Hanks and Roy Briggs. You could stand up. Gentlemen, if you don't mind coming forward and leading us for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd really appreciate it. Come on down up front, and we'll all rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance with you. We would leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. No, I didn't even ask. What troop are you guys from?
Troop 22.
And Zach, what troop?
Troop 48.
Thank you. All right, next item would be the consent agenda.
First thing we have is the Ways and Means Committee meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes, and executive session minutes from March 6, 2018. We have Matthew Smutz promotion to Sergeant effective March 12 at $21 an hour. Benjamin Zee starting March 26 in the Public Works Department at $14.50 an hour. Dana Bleska starting April 9 as the Finance Manager at $71,000 a year. Zachary Reese starting on April 2 in the Grounds and Maintenance Department at $14.50 an hour. And Cosme Garcia starting April 2 in the Grounds and Maintenance Department at $14 an hour.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Schultz, seconded by Alden Delloy. Roll call, please.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shellherby?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Next item agenda will be hearing from the public. Anything concerns or any issues you may have, you can come forward. Please step to the podium, state your name, and state your issue. We'll give you five minutes to speak. Not seeing anybody, we'll move on to the Board of Alden comments. All right, not seeing you, we'll skip on down to the committee meetings report. Do you have any comments, James? I do not. First one, we'll hear about the Warrington Downtown Association from a representative from the Board, Alderman Gary Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I met a week ago last night with the Downtown Association at the new Realty office where Dr. Coontz used to be. We met for approximately an hour and 45 minutes. There was probably 15 people there from the businesses downtown. The first thing that they wanted to discuss was how quick Brad got on the light issue they had brought up when we met with him here in the room here, and they were very, very thankful that Brad responded so quickly. Some areas that needed some lighting on the alleys, and he took care of that. We discussed also making the alleys one-way. After fairly lengthy discussion, they really couldn't come together with an agreement. Some wanted them to go one-way and some wanted them to go the other way. So we sort of tabled that issue for the time being. The next item that they discussed at length, they wanted to do a downtown spring festival. I think the date that they settled on was June 7, and there were a lot of input given what they would like to see in auto show, all kinds of booths and balanced houses and all that sort of thing. During the discussion, I asked them if they might consider condensing what they're going to do for June this year and have an event but not have it as large as they were talking about, and then plan for next year. Because if you're going to have vendors come in, you've got to book those up a long time ahead of time. So anyway, all that information was given. They were excited, very grateful to have the organization together again, and I can't think the lady's name, that she is the head of the events part of the downtown group, and I put her in touch with Brandy. They had a number of questions about what do they charge for vendors, how do they close different parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera. And Brandy has the experience and knowledge of that sort of thing, so she's going to meet with them this coming Thursday and hopefully can answer the questions that they have. It's going to take, those things take a lot of organization, and hopefully they can come together and put something on that people will appreciate, but that they can handle for the first time they've tried something like that. So anyway, very amiable meeting. They were excited. They were thankful that the city would send somebody to be there with them, and I was glad to do that. So that's basically in a nutshell what was discussed. We didn't get into the downtown revitalization part of the question, but they were really into the festival thing. So we'll see how that turns out after Brandy hopefully answers her question on Thursday, and then they'll get back in touch with me, and we'll proceed from there.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the Chamber of Commerce Representative, Alderman Greg Costello.
Yes, I attended the chamber meeting, which they're now having out at Country Lakes Golf Course. Really impressed with the crowd. Probably 50 or 60 members there and guests. Food was great. They are taking over, the chamber is taking over the Department of Motor Vehicle License Office. They're having a work day this Saturday from 8:00 a.m. till I guess they get done painting the location. Ask for any volunteers or members that would like to join them and help. They had a speaker who basically discussed the generational groups, all the way from builders, which was my parents, through Alpha and Z generation, and all between that was Boomers, Gen Xers, Millennials, and the like. Very interesting program. Appears to me that the chamber is somewhat revitalized and seem to have a good sense of purpose now, and I think that taking over the license bureau is going to be a good benefit to both their organization and the community. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Next. We have a joint meeting on May 8, 2018, if you want to write on your calendars, at 6:00 p.m. with the Warren County R3 School District at their central office. So may want to add it to whatever calendars you guys got.
Well, Mayor, will we need to submit topics for discussion or are we waiting to hear back from them?
If you have agenda items, please get those to us. They ask that you submit those, and then they'll add them. They do not have their agenda items together yet, so once they have that put together, they'll share it with us.
I think a lot of what it's based on is, number one, to talk about some topics, but also to meet the new superintendent who's coming in at that time, and I believe-
I'm sure he will be there, yes.
But to also kind of reintroduce ourselves to the boards and save the members as well. Next, we'll hear from Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is to request approval of the updated five-year strategic plan. We met a few weeks ago and discussed planning items to move forward and add to our plan in the city. Some of those will be items that we will accomplish within this next year, and we'll use that as a basis for our upcoming budget. Some others will be more long-term. Some of those more important topics were the discussion to improve communication with businesses and also with realtors and builders. So we'll be preparing a mailer with information that will be pertinent to each of those groups to get that out and keep them informed of whatever changes and things that are going on in the city. We also discussed methods, investigation of methods to reduce time to get through the planning and zoning process, and tonight you'll actually hear results of some analysis that Jack did related to that. We talked about putting together a committee that would be made up of fire and utilities and MoDOT, city staff, that would be able to meet with potential businesses that want to come into the city, kind of a one-stop shop so that they're getting all the information at one point as they start that process, so we'll be looking into that. Completing the South Highway 47 sidewalk connectivity has been on our agenda list for a while now. We believe that we'll get that accomplished in the next year, at least as much as we can to get that moving forward. We've been working on it, will continue working on it, and also looked at the possibility for sidewalk and road improvements on North Highway 47. We've actually contracted with an engineering firm to start that process. It'll be a fairly lengthy process, but we have started in that direction with the engineering firm moving forward. Improving communication with downtown business owners related to improvements downtown and safety and improving ADA accessibility. Those are things that we reported back to those downtown property and business owners in the letter that we sent, which I think Alderman, Miller, you all discussed at your recent meeting. So that's moving forward. And then we also discussed having Alderman be on both that Warrington Downtown Association Committee as well as the Chamber of Commerce so that we would improve communications, and you can see that that has already begun. So those are the highlights of the strategic plan, and I would just ask for your approval so we can make that official.
If there are any questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the five-year strategic plan for 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Miller, seconded by Aldman Costello. Roll call, please.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shellherby?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
So the next item won't be nearly as easy as that one. We talked about naming the new pool park, and Steph, as you suggested, got together and came up with a list of names and then narrowed that down to a handful. I sent that out to all of you, and the response was that we really did not get a determination of what the name of that park is going to be. I think it's important that we get it named so we can include that in our materials that we're going to be sending out. The three top candidates were Warrior Park, Warrior Ridge Park, and Warrington Pool Park. If there's something else you'd like to throw in the mix, let's do so, but we need to get a name determined so that we can be able to name our park in the information we're sending out. So I don't know how you'd like to proceed with that, but we certainly need direction.
Well, my response to this was to, I think I suggested the Warrington Pool Park. I think we need to keep the name as generic as we can in case there's a situation where we have to rename or want to rename the park sometime in the future for someone or something that has great significance to the community. And if you tie the name down to something where people have ownership of it, then it's going to be harder to do that. So that was my thought, is to keep it really generic. Warrington Pool Parks, tell us the people what's there. I mean, that's what it falls down to.
I concur with that. One of my concerns is the world we live in, this day and age, somebody will come up with some objection to being called Warrior, that we somehow are defaming some class of people in doing that. So the other thing, comments I heard from several individuals is that Warrior, we have a lot of streets and places named with the word Warrior in them, and that that's confusing in and of itself. So for whatever it's worth, I agree with Alderman Ock that we need to stay with the generic name, and if we do have some good reason to change it to name it after someone or something, we can do that in the future.
I would concur with Aldman Ock. I think Warrington Pool Park is the proper name to give it in the beginning and go from there.
I would agree with that as well.
Any other comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to name the Pool Park, the Warrington Pool Park.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Ock, seconded by Aldman Costello. Roll call, please.
Aldman-
I'm sorry. What did I say? Costello, Miller, I'm sorry. Aldman Miller seconded. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mayor, please?
I can. Motion made by Aldman Ock, and as I stand corrected, seconded by Aldman Miller to name the Pool Park to Warrington Pool Park. Roll call, please.
Aldman Shellherby?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
No.
Motion passes with a five yeses and one no.
Thank you. The next item I have is a request for approval. An ordinance will be on later, actually, for this, I believe. Is that correct, Melody?
Yes.
There's an ordinance. For a bulk sewer treatment agreement with the Public Water Supply District Number Two of St. Charles County. This is the mirror agreement to the previous agreement that you all approved with Montgomery County Water. And if you recall, we are bordered on both sides by water districts. So in order for the city to be able to expand past our current boundaries, it's necessary that we have these agreements in place since these water districts have the rights to those areas, but they do not have sewer available. So this is a mirror agreement with the previous agreement, as I said, with Montgomery County. It was approved by the Public Water Supply District Board at their March 14 meeting. It, as did the previous agreement, creates a connection point where there will be a master meter, so they will get one bill, and then the customers will be customers that are billed individually by the water supply district. It does not allow for connections that are not approved by the city. It also does not allow for connections that are outside the city boundaries. So in order for additional locations to be connected, they have to annex into the city to meet the requirements of this agreement. There are rates in town, residential rates will apply since all of those connected will be within the city boundaries, and they do have a specific bulk sewer connection fee, which is $1,000 currently in our code, but that will be subject to increase as other connection fees increase, the way this is written. So those are really the basics of the agreement. We will send them one bill at the end of each month based on the reading from the master meter, and then they will bill their customers individually.
I have a question. And I didn't catch this the last time we approved one, and I know this is probably not all flexibility, but how is the situation handled if the area goes industrial and you have a company like Coke that requires pre-treatment? Is that something that is specifically addressed in here, or is that, so in other words, they're going to have some kind of fluids coming off that is going to require something special treatment, otherwise we're going to be dealing with it at our plant? How does a situation like that handle?
They would have to submit the information, and Guy and his engineers would have to approve whatever pre-treatment they have in place to meet the same requirements as we have in our code.
But so there's no special billing that's different to the sewer district?
Right.
It's just part of one bill, and the assurance is that we're going to check whoever they hook on to make sure they're pre-treating?
Yeah, because by the time it gets to us, it should be within our standards. That's what the pre-treatment does.
Okay.
So they would have to meet all of the same code requirements that are in our code related to sewer.
Is it our responsibility to monitor the pre-treatment, or is that something their district would do?
We checked it. Like Coca-Cola, we checked Coca-Cola and Y-Bo, making sure that they're paperwork that's in order.
Okay. That's all I had.
Once again, that'll be on a bill later on in the agenda.
And then the last thing I have is just to really add the information for the public purposes. I think Brady sent all of you an email talking about the fact that Meridian, the new trash company, has agreed to provide dumpsters during our cleanup day, which is April 21st. There'll be some large dumpsters here at City Hall, and all city residents will have the ability to bring large bulky items, couches, chairs, those types of things, and dispose of that on cleanup day here. So it's the first time that we've ever been able to get that possibility of having that. We hope that will help clean up some of the trash that's out within the city without having to pay the $20 charge individually to have it picked up.
Hey, I think it's awesome that they're doing that. I think it's great. I think that was due to the efforts of the city's negotiating abilities.
Actually, Brandy's the one who was able to get this done. She was having a discussion about trash on the day, the Fall Festival Day, and decided she would just throw that out there and was able to get it put together, so.
She's not even here for us.
I know, but we were so excited because it's something we've wanted to do for a long time, and we're never able to really get it put together, so.
Now, we just have to put pressure on the people to get the stuff up here.
Sure.
I think the Aldermen who have pickups should volunteer their trucks, their service, to the residents and their wards to help them with that issue. I can say that I don't have a truck, but I'm sure somebody else might.
I'm sure that a little red nifty car we could strap.
That might end up in the dumpster, too.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll hear from the zoning officer and building commissioner, Jack Hannah.
First thing I have is a monthly building code enforcement report. In January and February, there was nine new residential starts, which is exciting, and the amount of inquiries and that work I've been receiving on our code and the permit process, I got a feeling this is going to be a record-breaking year for us. And then this is a reminder that on the 27th, we have the property maintenance workshop to look into revising or continuing adopting the new code regarding property maintenance.
Any questions? Comments? All right.
Next item I have is a site plan approval request for K-4 Performance Center. Site Plan SP-124, and the applicant and the engineers and the architect are all here if you have any specific questions.
This'll also be a bill later on in the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? May save you the trouble of getting out if there's no questions. Right?
Next item I have is the conditional use permit approval request for the K-4 Performance Center.
I'd be interested to hear what the owners' thoughts are in regard to the request by Mrs. Gluntz.
How you doing, guys? My name is Mr. Jeremiah Koch with Hopkido Plus and K-4 Fitness. In response to Ms. G's inquiry, basically, I think it's kind of premature for us to really figure out what times in the evening or even during the day that we are going to be holding these outdoor athletic facility portion of it. The reason why is because this is going to be strategically and specifically oriented for nonprofit kids that are having kind of a rough start. This is more of a life coaching option instead of a sports application, going to the ballpark- going to the ballpark kind of, you know, football kind of deal. They're working specifically in a lot smaller groups and only the Warrenton Athletic Resource kids are able to compete with each other to benefit the nonprofit. I highly doubt that anybody's going to really want six and eight-year-olds out past their bedtime around 9:00 PM. Most of these are going to be junior youths and things like this that we're going to keep a pretty close eye on. So, I don't really necessarily feel that the duration is going to cause too much of an issue. Even then, I know that we had spoke last time with her at the last P&amp;Z meeting and we exchanged numbers and we've been, you know, a little bit in collaboration. And we've even been invited over to her residence to go ahead and look over the grand scheme of things and kind of develop a local plan that is going to benefit mutually, not only her residence, but also the program.
So, as I look at your site plan, the proposed building is pretty much to the north of your property. And then I see outdoor sand volleyball pits to the east of the building, kind of between the auto parts store in your new building. And then you've got a possibility of future addition. Do you have any feel for where the activities for the youth would be on the outside?
It's going to be pretty much directly right south, I do believe.
So, where it's showing the future addition?
Yes, south. But it's probably going to be pushed a little bit more north, really baseline right at the bottom of the building. Reason why is, I mean, these youth, they're going to need access to bathrooms and, you know, shade and water and these types of things. We actually strategically placed the facility more close to the service road to alleviate any transgressions with the residents of the area. I was having some discussions with some individuals when we very first purchased the land about their concern about this issue. And we were very, you know, we were very much paying attention to what a lot of their pleas were. I completely understand their direction with it because obviously if you're at your house, you don't want to have anybody have any undue traffic upon your domicile, you know. But we did actually, because we were going to have the building down more closer to the center of the land, but we actually put it more, yes, to the north to kind of help a little bit. And we also reoriented the building running north to south instead of east to west. So, this way, any lighting issues, exit or entrance doorways or anything, that would not be directly seen by anybody's residents. So, we were very, we were very much paying attention to that.
Sure. Jeremiah, when you talk about, I guess, limiting the size of these groups that you have back there, would that, I guess, that would be something that you would be agreeable to if, in fact, it presented a problem?
That's a hard question to answer because I will just throw this upon you. If I have a chance and an opportunity, because I'm primarily staffed or well-funded, to help the life of a child that is going to go forth and live a fantastic life, and then they're going to push that onto their kids, and it just makes the world a better place, over trying to limit these groups to such a capacity. Am I going to see 50 kids on the playing field at 9:00 o'clock at night? No. No, not at all. I mean, honestly, I would really think no more than probably eight to 12 kids per coach, per life coach. Even then, these, the groups and stuff are going to be only running about 30 to 45 minutes at a clip for their clinic or, you know, class. But then also, the other thing is, is there's going to be another larger segment that is going to take place on the interior of the building, of which we wouldn't even be outside. The development of the program is pretty close to my heart. So, I would really hate to answer that question and say, okay, from here on out, I'm only going to cap it at eight kids. If I can help a kid, I'm going to help a kid. That's just the way that's going to happen. It's always been in our mantra for our HopKido Plus program, you know. But as far as to kind of say a little bit on the concern, as well as I could to keep it down and then keep the actual programs in such a fashion that doesn't conflict with anybody else's interest, I'm very much up for that.
Well, that's kind of what I was getting at. I didn't expect you to limit it right now, but I mean, you know, just so that down the road, you would be open to work.
I get that. Yeah, no, no, absolutely. And, you know, we also, we had talked and, you know, going to her house and kind of looking out the back because obviously your deck, you know, faces out the back. But when people, and you can see, I kind of get a little bit fired up about it. When people start asking me putting limitations on somebody's projected growth for the future for them to actually, you know, be able to live a fantastic life, I don't think anybody would like that for our child. So...
Counselor, what kind of activities are you... Because typically, when we see a kid's play area, you think of baseball, football, blah, blah, blah. So, which can be noisy? What kind of functions do you anticipate going on outside?
A lot of great stuff. Honestly, the sports don't matter. Okay? Honestly, it's all about the experience. If I can find a kid that likes baseball, per se, it's really an excuse for us to get him into the program because we have fantastic life coaches. That they use the baseball as an excuse and they say, hey, buddy, how you doing? What's new today? You know, these types of things. And that really keeps them going. It's a multipurpose practice field, you know. So, I mean, you're talking about a myriad of sports that would be available. We're not talking like high lights or anything like that.
But you're not talking about organized leagues?
No.
Which is typically what a person would think of.
No, no. Actually, this is only specifically oriented for the nonprofit, the Warrenton Athletic Resources.
So, Counselor, wouldn't this, I mean, the noise level issue already be covered under our current ordinances?
It would. It would be covered under the current ordinance. One of the comments I wanted to make about this is, I know there's, well, we'll work it out in the future. This is a conditional use permit that is going to give him vested rights. So, from a municipal perspective, you can always come back and loosen those restrictions, but you can't come back and say, well, you're going until 9:00. We want to restrict you to 8:00 unless he is the applicant to do that because you've given him a vested land use right by doing that. So, I understand all of the concerns and I understand the position of the applicant, but if you want to restrict noise or hours... Noise is very difficult to restrict. The only way you can really effectively restrict noise is by restricting hours of operation. I mean, that's during the times that may be a concern to a neighbor or to residents surrounding it. You can always come back and say, look, this is what we're doing. It's not a nuisance noise-wise. We don't want to do it. But I just want to make sure, you know, because Alderman Schellherby, you said, well, can you work with, only working with this group? We can't really develop that into a specific condition. So, understand if you don't put a time restriction on when the fields can be used, he will have the ability to use those fields whenever he wants to use those outdoor fields with really no protection for the surrounding residents. So, I just want to make sure that you guys know that. Now, obviously, noise can be something that can be a noise complaint. It's past dark. There's noise going on out there. That's absolutely something that is regulated within our code. So, that's my short and long answer to that.
I would even go so far to say that, you know, within the actual specific code that's already laid down, I mean, we have a sunset clause and, you know, that's not an issue. And if it becomes an issue later on, then obviously we can't revisit it. I can vouch for all the neighbors that are around us and they absolutely love what we're doing, not only with our programs, but the way that we handle our business. Because there used to be fights and drinking and a whole bunch of the crazy stuff going on in that parking lot. But then also, you're talking about noise, per se. You know, there's trains running behind there all the time. There's always highway noise. There's always construction noise. There's always a lot of other additional noise that is happening at all hours of the night regardless of a couple screaming kids, you know.
I mean, I've spent a little time very near there by Denny's this past summer, working with the Tribute to Veterans project. And it's very noisy in that area because of the interstate. So, and I'm sure, Ms. Quantz, you already are aware of that. You get a truck coming down the road with a tire coming loose or out of balance. It's noisy. Now, the property I was on is even closer than you are to there. And I know you've got a body shop close by and some other noises that come from that area, but...
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sir, pleasure.
There again, this will be a bill later on the agenda. All right, Jack?
Next item I have is an analysis of the building permit timing. There was previous discussion on the amount of time for coming through, getting building permits approved. So, I went back and got all the data from January of 2015 up to the end of February of 2018, three years and two months. And I've listed the average amount of time spent required to process the permit applications from the time that all the required information is submitted and are the plan review fees have been paid. Forty-four out of the 49 permit applications I would consider was typical. I have the breakdown on, for the typical permit application is 13 days. And I went ahead and further broke it down to how many days are actually controlled by the city. And that section also includes when it's sent out to GBA for review. I was actually surprised how good our numbers looked. And I think a lot of it has to do with, in September of 14, we adopted the master plan procedure. And I think that's really helped speed up everything. As you can see, on 22 of the 44 permits that was issued during that timeframe, 22 of them, the city finished their part of it in one day and the applicant also had it finished in one day. The average was five days for the city and five days that was controlled by the applicant. So, a total of 13 days. On the five non-typical ones during that three-year and two-month period, the city's time averaged 18 days and the applicant's time averaged 94 days. And then I gave you some specific information for them, five examples to help you understand what was involved and what ended up taking a longer time. So, hopefully that answers your questions. I do have the specific spreadsheets and that. I didn't know if that'd be something you guys wanted to have, that specific detail, or if this summary is more of what you was looking for.
Well, I have to say that this is tremendous analysis. I think when we deal with applications and the words, well, it takes so long to get anything done with the city, you can see if it's a non-typical project, most of that time is really not when the city's doing anything. It's when the city's waiting for the applicant to come back with something. So, if you look at one of them here, the project took 140 days, but the city only processed it in 13 days. The applicant had it for almost three months. But I could see something, well, it took so long for the city to approve this project. But it's not, it's not the city holding it for the majority of the time. It's really the applicant responding and trying to get something done at whatever timeframe they're under or they want to choose to work at. So, I think this is tremendous analysis.
And I think it's impressive that realistically, in three years and two months, there was only five that really went to the extreme.
Right.
I think the self-analysis is good in and of itself because it shows in detail what is happening. And, you know, I've been on both sides of this as a builder or developer and they have things that they can't control, you know, engineering reports and plans that need to be drawn. I think it's good self-analysis and, you know, basically looking for ways to improve. And it also shows us it's operating pretty efficiently now, too.
And I believe the master plan, when the board approved that process, that really helped.
Any questions, comments?
Next item I have, I basically did the same thing for the planning and zoning process. Same timeframe from January of 2015 through the end of February 2018. Ninety-one approval requests was presented to Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Aldermen. Seventy-four of them, or 81% of the approval requests that were presented to Planning and Zoning Commission on the first Thursday of the month were approved by the Board of Aldermen on the third Tuesday of the same month. I think that is extremely impressive. And thank you guys for working with us and getting that taken care of. Of the 17, out of the 91 that was not approved during the same month, I went ahead and provided a breakdown. Seven of them was either tabled by Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board of Aldermen, basically requesting more information. Seven of them was tabled or withdrawn by the applicant and three of them was rescheduled to a different date. And then I gave you the typical schedule. It shows basically our time we ask for things to be submitted, the dates I got to get it to the paper, the dates that their public hearing notices are actually ran in the paper, the timeframe and dates for when I would send out the adjacent property notifications and then when I posted on-site and here in the front lobby of City Hall. So, hopefully this information will help you understand our timeframe on that, too.
Well, the one thing I found interesting on this is this whole discussion about how many public hearings does something require. And we could, as I read it, we could get around having two public hearings and just do one, which would shorten the timeframe. But I am certainly not in favor of that because sometimes the P&amp;Z board don't agree. So, you have that issue going on. But you also have an opportunity for residents to come at two different meetings. If they're out of town on one, they can come to the second one. So, I would rather be more than generous on the timeframe because I think it's in the public's interest. So, I don't think we want to go to a situation where we eliminate the public hearing on the board side. That's me.
So, does the public hearing really add time? Because, you know, we have a public hearing this evening on issue that's K-4 and yet we're going to vote on it this evening. So, does that second public hearing really delay a normal situation plan for the applicant?
The public hearing before the board meeting would not add any additional time. If you remove the public hearing before P&amp;Z, that would shorten the amount of time. Then I would just have to send the letters out to the adjacent property owners. But I think sort of what Mr. Alderman Ock just said, stated that P&amp;Z is probably when you really want, while it's new, that might be when you want the public's input. So...
Right. Because you wouldn't want to come into something that's already been approved and hear, and all of a sudden, the public finally gets to hear about it and you're going, hey, wait a minute, you know, this wasn't considered or we need more time to consider, which would probably delay it. So, I, you know, so that would be, I think, two public hearings is critical.
And I believe, Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the logic of having both public hearings was to help the community be informed.
Yeah, the two public hearings was really a product of the Highway U condos. And I think when we started seeing some multifamily, there was some complaints when we didn't receive notifications. So, we sent the letters out within the 180-degree radius. We do the public hearings. Now, we also, we do the two public hearings and we also post the signs. So, I think kind of balancing opportunities for the public to be notified and be heard, and it also goes in the paper versus an expedited process, I think we have a really good balance for our planning and zoning process right now. I mean, you're talking 81% are approved within the month that they're, the same month that they're reviewed and recommendations made by planning and zoning. So...
So, part of the consensus is not to change process.
Right.
Any opposing to that? All right. Go ahead, Jack.
The last item I have was an approval request for Lot 3 A and B Villages of Warrior Ridge, individual lot multifamily development approval request. Their site plan was approved. They came back and got, on October 17, they got approval to extend it another 180 days, which will expire on April the 15th. And contacting them and speaking with them, just reminding them that's coming up due. They're asking for one more extension. They believe they got their form. It's in the process of being sold and that's what's holding them up. They need to get their form sold before they actually start building the new residents for them. So, they were asking if they can get another extension.
So, Jack, where is this exactly? I mean, I know where Warrior Ridge is, but can you give me a...
It's in there. It's in that first court.
On the left?
When you go past the school on the left, that little sharp court, the corner lot.
Entertained motion to approve an extension for construction on, for Lot Three A and B Villages of Warrior Ridge.
So, move.
Second.
Motion is made by Alden Costello, signed by Alden Delloy, is that correct? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
That's it, sir.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Maintenance and Grounds Director Brad Fuzicruz.
Good evening. You have my monthly report for February. Still doing quite a bit of maintenance, servicing equipment. Lot of clearing over at the new park. Some of the things that we have been doing over at the new park, we're getting ready to start the... We started yesterday with some of the new fence that's going on the south side, coming in. Should hopefully have that done, providing the weather stays good by the end of the week here. We should have that done. I've got, the last load is scheduled for tomorrow at nine o'clock for the conduit. We've got twelve thousand feet of conduit we're going to be putting in out at the complex. We will start that project on April the second, when our piece of machinery gets here that we're going to start going. We've got all of the disc golf courses marked now, and we've got about half of it cut, trimmed the way the people, the course guys would like it. And then, we're also, soccer started last Saturday and ball season. We're getting, I think, the coaches' meeting is the twenty-sixth, so we'll be starting ball practice shortly thereafter. So, our fields, we'll be getting our fields and stuff ready for ball season.
Any questions? Next, Brad.
Next you have is the Dog Park Fence Bid. We had, we had ten people bid on it. We would like to go with the bid of All-Star Fence for a price of eighteen thousand, nine hundred, one dollar and seventy-three cents.
Any questions on that bid? Entertained motion to award the Dog Park Fence Bid to All-Star Fence in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and seventy-three cents.
So, low bid.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Schultz, signed by Alden Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Next I have is the Portable Toilet Unit Bid. And this takes care of the ones that we have out at some of the parks for the early season before we turn it on and also the fall festival. And I would like to award that one to O'Fallon Sewer for a bid of three thousand, forty dollars.
Any questions on that? Entertained motion to award the Portable Toilet Bid to O'Fallon Sewer Service in the amount of three thousand, forty dollars, a low bid.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Schultz, signed by Alden Costello. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Last that I have is the Wire and Conduit Bid Tabs. This is for our street lighting. Our part of the thing is four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Questions on that? Entertained motion to award the electric wire and conduit quotes to halt electrical supplies in the amount of four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-six cents, the low bid. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Delloy, signed by Alden Costello. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Next, we'll hear from Public Works Director Guy Jiebers.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First time I have my monthly report. We've got some stormwater projects completed. Right now, we're working up on Wolf Road, ripping out some old asphalt, replacing it with rock, and getting ready to repave it. And we're gearing up for the, running the water lines at the pool park, so.
Any questions? Please, vote, please. Report. All right, next guy.
Next item I have is the Well Seven Transfer Switch. We ran this in a paper. We had three people come out to look at it. We requested if somebody's going to bid on it to come out and look at the site. And the only bid that we received was from Roger OMB Sales and Service for thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixteen cents.
Any questions on that?
Are you comfortable?
Why did we only get, nobody else was interested?
We put it in the paper. We had three companies show up for site. One of the gentlemen said that he had it sitting on his truck and he forgot to turn it in.
There's dates, but all for a reason. So...
You had a question? Alden Miller?
I just, if you're comfortable with the numbers?
Yeah, the budget amount was sixteen thousand, nine hundred. So, initially, when we did the budget, we were there on that part of it, so.
All right, well, if there's no more questions, so entertained a motion to award the Well Seven Transfer Switch to Roger OMB Sales and Service in the amount of thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixteen cents. The only bid. So, move. Motion made by Alden Shel Harvey, signed by Alden Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
The next item I have is Troy Street Lift Station. And Hagman Plumbing came in at a low bid at sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. That was also put in the paper for bid. We've had multiple people come out and look at that and only received two bids on that. The only issue I have is my budget amount was forty-five thousand dollars. And I need to reallocate funds from the Treatment Plant Road for twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Given the Treatment Plant Road, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents left for that project, which the project is completed. We've got some seed straw to do, but the bridge is in, the gravel is in, the fence will be up. And the fence is already taken out of that budget part, so.
So, you're comfortable with reallocation?
Yes.
Any questions? All right, I entertain a motion to award the Troy Road Lift Station Bid to Hagman Plumbing in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, a low bid. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Miller, signed by Alden Shel Harvey. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
I'm sorry. You already caught it, didn't you?
Yeah.
Motion carries six-zero. Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the Warrant Police Department Lieutenant Brandon Weber.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The first thing I have is the Police Department Report. Call numbers, pretty much on par from last year as far as day shift, night shift. There's a little bit of a drop unless you're comparing it to November, December, still because we're short-staffed. We have, you know, we're two officers short and a sergeant, if you combine both night shifts. Any questions? All right, next I have the Monthly Criminal Investigations Division Report. Officer Unger closed nine cases, solved seven, with a seventy-seven percent solve rate. That's pretty typical for him, and that's really good. Most investigators don't pull anywhere close to that solve percentage. Our new detective started on February nineteenth, and his numbers only reflect from that date until the end of February. At my direction, he closed out cases that were, there were no, all the leads were exhausted, and there was nowhere to go with him, so he followed up on what he could and closed out six. He solved one. He also solved, he began working on a robbery, which was actually closed this month, but five suspects were charged, four were arrested. I'm not going to discuss specifics because it's still ongoing case. But, you know, one point five million in bonds on that one, so he did a good job on that for a good start. Any questions about the drug-related incidents from February?
I believe so.
So, citation totals dropped just slightly. We're at one-twenty-nine. I think last month, we were at one-hundred and forty-four. Again, we are short-staffed, so I think those numbers are relatively good. Those guys are out there, our guys are out there doing what they can. They're being proactive as they can with the manpower issue we're having currently. Any questions on the call types or totals? Any further questions about the report?
I don't believe so.
Second item I have is we're seeking approval of four policies. Missing persons policy, oath of office and code of ethics policy, school safety patrol policy, and the firing range policy. Board, have any questions about those policies?
Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following: missing persons policy, oath of office and code of ethics policy, school safety patrol policy, and the firing range policy. Yes, submit it. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Shel Harvey, signed by Alden Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
Thank you. We are at the Bill of Ordinance. I will entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number eleven dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Costello, signed by Alden Shel Harvey.
In ordinance to annex an unincorporated area located west of Highway MM by Country Lake Golf Course into the city of Warrant, Missouri without further action.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number eleven dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Delloy, signed by Alden Shel Harvey.
In ordinance to annex an unincorporated area located west of Highway MM by Country Lake Golf Course into the city of Warrant, Missouri without further action.
Roll call vote.
Mayor?
I'm sorry?
You had mentioned it before it break. I think it's important that we point out to the public that this is not annexing Lakeview Estates into the city of Warrant. I know you've had some questions from the residents concerning that, and this is not that at all. I presume this is highway commercial property between MM and the new interchange.
Thank you for specifying that. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number twelve dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Miller, signed by Alden Delloy.
The zoning ordinance is authorized under Section four zero five point three nine zero of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrant, Missouri, approving a site plan for K-4 Performance Center located at five zero eight Veterans Memorial Parkway.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number twelve dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, who wants to go first? Motion made by Alden Shel Harvey, signed by Alden Delloy.
The zoning ordinance is authorized under Section four zero five point three nine zero of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrant, Missouri, approving a site plan for K-4 Performance Center located at five zero eight Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Roll call vote.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number thirteen dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Miller, signed by Alden Schultz.
In ordinance approving the conditional use to allow K-4 Performance Center an indoor athletic and exercise club with outdoor athletic fields located at five zero eight Veterans Memorial Parkway.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number thirteen dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Delloy, signed by Alden Costello.
In ordinance approving the conditional use to allow K-4 Performance Center an indoor athletic and exercise club with outdoor athletic fields located at five zero eight Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Roll call vote.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. Entertained a motion for the first reading of Bill number fourteen dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Costello, signed by Alden Ock.
In ordinance amending Section two one zero point seven one zero of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrant, Missouri, related to days and times fireworks are allowed.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number fourteen dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Delloy, signed by Alden Schultz.
In ordinance amending Section two one zero point seven one zero of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrant, Missouri, related to days and times fireworks are allowed.
Roll call vote, please.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number fifteen dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Miller, signed by Alden Schultz.
In ordinance authorizing execution of a bulk sewer treatment agreement between Public Water Supply District Number Two of St. Charles County and the city of Warrant, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number fifteen dash eighteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Costello, signed by Alden Shel Harvey.
In ordinance authorizing execution of a bulk sewer treatment agreement between Public Water Supply District Number Two of St. Charles County and the city of Warrant, Missouri.
Roll call vote.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. We are at that time where I'll be asking for adjournment for executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Alderman meeting and go into executive session for personnel issues. So, move. Motion made by Alden Shel Harvey, signed by Alden Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Costello?
Yes.
Alden Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. We are so adjourned. Thank you, folks.